Recording in progress.
Jamie, are you ready for Olivia?
Looking to confirm that we have four commissioners. Yeah, I go Klowsky, but I don't see him.
But we have Begum, we have, well, on the list, Soto Mayor, myself, I saw Gluckowski, but no, did he disappear?
Yeah, he did mention that he just got a notice that they were having service issues in his area. Let me try texting him real quick. I think that, David, is that you that just joined by phone?
Yep.
Okay. So we should have.
I'm trying to resign index supposed to be working now.
Yeah, that's okay. We're glad you're you're here. That makes four, and if you're ready, I think we can go ahead and get started.
Okay.
All right. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Branford Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission. This meeting is being held in accordance with Connecticut Public Act twenty-two dash three, as well as inland wetland regulations in the town of Branford. Just some procedural notes. For those who wish to address the commission, please be advised of the following. First, all speakers are required to state their name and or title and title or affiliation each time you speak on the record. If you're participating remotely and your line is muted, please utilize the raise hand feature to be recognized. Materials related to the agenda for tonight's meeting can be found in the town's Open Gov permitting portal and the wetland agency's drop box. Both are linked in the agenda. And also, just for tonight, as a commissioner, I often initiate questions early in the discussion. Tonight, as the acting chair, my focus will be primarily to facilitate a legally sound and efficient meeting. And so I'll look to my fellow commissioners to raise your concerns and offer input first, and I will reserve my own questions and observations until later in the discussion. Additionally, before we begin any applications, I want to take a moment to remind everyone, including commissioners, applicants, and the public about our legal purview. So by state statute and local regulation, our charge is narrowly focused on the protection, preservation, and regulation of inland wetlands and water courses, and any land use activity is likely to have a significant impact upon them. This commission cannot legally take into consider to consideration factors that fall outside of this scope, such as wildlife, traffic, property value, taxes, et cetera. And so we will adhere to those standards outlined in our regulations. And so, Jamie, is there any change to the agenda?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, I will note that forty-two Silver Street is going to be tabled.
Okay, great, thank you. And so with that, we will do a roll call, just noticing one more. Commissioner Begum.
Commissioner Begum, present.
Commissioner Gluckowski.
Commissioner Gluckowski, present.
Commissioner Papantonis.
Commissioner Papantonis, present.
Commissioner Soto Mayor.
Commissioner Soto Mayor, present.
And so with that, we have our meeting is now in order, and we will begin with the minutes of October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five for approval. Are there any commissioners that I didn't call?
This is this is Commissioner Kowkloski. For the record, I'd like to state that I did review the minutes from the last meeting that I had missed, so I'm able to discuss anything from that particular meeting from October twenty-third.
Great, thank you.
This is Commissioner Begum, and I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the regular regularly scheduled meeting on ten twenty-three twenty-five.
Commissioner Papantonis, second. Okay, thank you. We have a first and we have a second. Any questions about the motion? All in favor? Is it, would you prefer I do a roll call for each of these?
Preferably, yes.
Commissioner Begum.
Commissioner Begum, aye.
Commissioner Gluckowski.
Commissioner Gluckowski, aye.
Commissioner Papantonis.
Commissioner Papantonis, aye.
Commissioner Soto Mayor.
Commissioner Soto Mayor, aye.
And Commissioner Boda, aye. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to item number four, the public hearing. This is B R I W twenty-five point ten point oh one, the Chestnut Street Bridge. And before I hand it over to the applicant, I just want to confirm that the commissioners' CVs have been placed on the record.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, they have not. However, we can incorporate that and make sure the applicant receives a copy.
Okay, thank you. All right, and would you like to start us out, or are we ready to jump in with the applicant?
I would say let's hand it over to the applicant.
Okay, good evening, commissioners. My name is Keegan Elder. Can everyone hear me well from WMC Consulting Engineers? Excellent. For the record again, my name is Keegan Elder for from WMC Consulting Engineers. We're a civil engineering firm that was hired by the town of Branford, the owner of this property, to prepare design plans to go out to bid for construction of the replacement of the Chestnut Street Bridge. For this presentation, I'll sort of walk through details of the project, bring everyone up to speed. Feel free to interrupt with any questions as I go along. Can I share my screen?
Be able to determine if you have any issues.
Is my screen up?
Yeah.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, so the bridge located between the Norton Supply Pond over Chestnut Street was built back in nineteen forty. It was inspected and found to be rated at three out of ten, which is serious condition. The next step below that is critical and becomes a serious safety hazard and prompt in potential closure of this accessway. The town engaged us to do a design to replace that structure. The replacement, the existing bridge is a ten-foot span arch-type bridge. Like I mentioned, that was built in in nineteen forty. The replacement is going to be a fourteen-foot span, sixteen-foot span bridge, sorry, with an arch facade as well. The larger span helps us improve the hydraulic capacity of the structure and also helps limit our impacts to the wetland by being able to overbuild behind the existing structure. If you're familiar with the area, you know that the the ponds above the roadway all around the existing project. So in order to facilitate the replacement of the bridge, we'll be installing temporary corffams so that work can be performed in the dry. This project is funded under what's called a state local bridge program. Part of the requirements for that program is the E P, Army Corps, Fisheries, N D D B Review and Meeting, which was held a few months ago. We have comments from all of those agencies that were incorporated into our design. Before we submit our final Army Corps permit application, we need local wetlands sign off to be included as part of that application. So as I mentioned before, the project entails sixteen-foot span bridge. The bridge is shown, if you can follow my my mouse in this area right here, that bridge will include two eleven-foot lanes, will also include a five-foot sidewalk along the north side. That sidewalk is a safety feature and also a recommendation by Fisheries for fishing platform, but something that the town wanted to incorporate as a as an added safety feature for pedestrians that park at either side and utilize this structure when they go hiking, walking, fishing, or anything like that. So scrolling down to the plans that show the impact areas shaded are overall impacts to the wetland, temporary and permanent account for about twenty-four hundred square feet. The temporary is shown in green, and the temporary is generally areas within the corffordam that contractor is going to use to access to build our retaining walls and all culvert. I'm going to skip ahead a couple of slides to an overall view of the project so that when I go back, you can you can get a better sense of what features I'm referring to. So this is our bridge in the structure plan view located here, our new bridge. Along the edge of the road, we have retaining walls. Those are seen also below in the elevation view. Those retaining walls help support the level of the existing roadway and keep the water at bay, so to speak. So it's a retaining wall needed for support of the roadway. And those run along the edge of the road as shown here. The existing features or the existing topography out there features some rocks in some areas, some steep slopes that grass generally doesn't grow, and it it's not properly supported, so to speak. But because of our new design and our slight widening on the north side, we certainly have to install a concrete retaining wall to support those. This is a typical section of what the bridge would look like. It shows those two eleven-foot lanes that I mentioned, the sidewalk and curb, and then the full hyperapet needed for a safety feature for per per DOT guidelines. So with sort of that overall view of the structure, one more thing I would show that would explain some of our requirements is our profile, our vertical profile. The dark line here seen is us showing the new proposed roadway to be slightly smoother and slightly higher than the existing, which is in the light gray. This also improves our hydraulic capacity and meets other requirements as far as rideability and geometric improvements for the project. So with that, we'll go back to our impacts. So the temporary impacts, as I mentioned, includes temporary corffordams going around these retaining walls needed to construct that work in the dry. The contractor will have small equipment in the hole for forming and constructing those wing walls. That's the shaded green area. The shaded blue area is wetland impacts or water course impacts that are more permanent. And there's a slight sort of dash where we have our new wing walls. That's a permanent loss, which will be that will play into the overall numbers at the end when we talk about mitigation. But this in general is the work that's necessary for this project. We reviewed a few alternatives to this design, one being a four-sided structure, which would have been one of the cheaper alternatives. But due to the need to create a temporary channel to install that type of structure, the environmental impacts on that structure would have been much more. We also reviewed conventional bridge types with either concrete beams or steel beams versus a three-sided frame that we have now. Each of those structures require a deeper superstructure or riding course, which would mean raising the road even more, thus needing much longer retaining walls and potentially having more sloping impacts, more impacts to the environment further out from the bridge. Obviously, the do-nothing alternative was reviewed, but because of the condition of the bridge, I think we're all in consensus that something something has to be done before the bridges is ultimately required to be closed. So we reviewed a few alternatives and ultimately settled on this alternative, which was a blend of cost, environmental impacts, and the structural and hydraulic capacity, and then also meeting all the requirements that DOT has set forth. So some of the other components that I'll talk about that are important to the commission and important to projects in sensitive areas such as these invasive species removal. This is something that we typically include for projects. Bridge projects, something that the state also has created a specification for that will be included in this project, and we call for invasive removal throughout the limits of all disturbance on this project, shown by the orange shaded area here. In addition to that, we try to include some mitigation, and we try to quantify that as best as we can. The the area in the dark orange due to the widening of the bridge and the construction of these retaining walls is permanent wetland or water course gain. So these areas would all be either new wetland that wasn't there prior or enhanced wetlands due to the construction. The light shaded orange area includes mitigation in the form of replanting wetland seed mix. And just on this corner adjacent to the entrance to the fields back here, construction of a swale, formalized swale that will drain the existing slopes down into the pond over in this area. Overall, I think our total mitigation and enhancements equate to about thirty-four hundred square feet versus the twenty-four hundred. We were not able to get a two to one within the limits of the project, slightly below one and a half to one. But as we discussed in the application and some of the documents submitted, because of the confines of the site and the causeway type area, it is not much room or locations around here to 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 add more mitigation into the project. But with that said, we think we think that we did all due diligence to include as much as we can within the confines of the project scope and and the limits of construction. Let's see. With that, I will sort of open it up for any questions and any concerns or comments.
This is Commissioner Kowkloski. You're expanding the size of the bridge to what size? From what size to what size again?
We're going from a ten-foot span to a sixteen-foot span.
And that's on here. So you're actually why you're 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 going to widen that particular area. Is that correct?
Yeah, so when you say bridge width in in my my sort of nomenclature, that means the passage way for the water. So that is what's going from ten to sixteen.
Okay.
When you're talking about roadway width, that is also increasing as well. That is about twenty-one feet now, roughly twenty twenty-one feet for existing. It's pretty narrow. We're going to go to twenty-two feet, but then we'll also add in a five-foot sidewalk and head walls on top of that. So that is getting wider as well.
Just sidewalk going to be on both sides or just one side of the bridge?
Just one side, just on the north side, and that sort of ties into the parking areas that you have and some of the trails that 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 go to the hiking ground.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Begum. Several questions. So the area to the to the west of of the of the, yeah, of the the bridge where you're going to be putting the swale in.
Yep.
That goes all the way from kind of the far left, the uphill side, and then goes over to the right and goes into the water without cross. So you're trying to stop some of that that water from crossing asphalt.
Yeah, so this, yeah, so this will be a formalized swale back here, and it would, they'll all be sort of treated as it comes through here and back down to the pond.
And this is Commissioner Begum again. And those parking spaces that are just below your cursor, they're gravel right now. What is the proposed surface going to be?
The proposed surface is going to be bituminous concrete asphalt pavement. That's currently what's being proposed.
And can Commissioner Begum again, can you just talk about the drainage of that water?
So, yep, that water, so the center line of the road is the high point, and it pitches to both sides at a two percent slope. So all water across the bridge is going to be or with through project is going to be pitched to the left side off the edge of the road and to the right side off the edge of typical sheet flow pattern, which is currently existing there as we speak. So in this parking area particularly, it is going to be pitched off to the side into this swale in addition to any runoff coming down the hill and outlet it through the natural turf that's established in this area.
And this is Commissioner Begum. Maybe I didn't see this. The swale is going to be a grass swale that can be mowed, or is it?
Yes, 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 it will be a grass wheel that could be mowed. There's a gate here that they access the field as well. So we didn't want to do something too expansive that they that that would prohibit or inhibit them from getting into into that area for mowing and so forth.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, do you mind going to the mitigation plan so we can take a look at that and get called out for a wet mitigation area, wetland seed mix? So is the intention that that area will be wet or that it will drain in between like storm events?
I suspect that it will drain in between storm events. Most of the wetland seed mix, I would suspect, would be within this area. We could, I mean, we showed mix in here as well. We could do a standard turf establishment being at a higher level, but for now, we showed seed mix throughout, and yes, it will drain. It will drain during storm events and then be mowed or maintained after that.
I don't recall. Did you have a specific seed mix called out, or?
We have a standard specification for wetland seed mix. I can send that to you if it was not included in the application.
This is Commissioner Begum, and those darker orange circles in the mitigation area are the, oh, those are the plants down there that.
Yes, yep, yep.
Mr. Elder, this is Commissioner Boda. Are you is there any infiltration planned for that swale, or you're just looking for drainage? Would it be possible to plan for some infiltration there?
There was not. It's something that we can certainly look into if that's something that the commission would commission would like to see. It was just meant to properly convey the war. It's it's not formalized now. There's a small pipe underneath right there. So we're we're basically formalizing what was existing, improving that area, so to speak. Relatively flat, but it does have a natural slope or tendency to go towards the pond. And obviously, the water table is relatively high as well. That sort of precludes us from doing much from a structural underground style type system as well. So.
This is Commissioner Begum. Regarding swales and the amount of water that they can handle, that this swale will be getting the water from the hill to the left of the parking lot that comes down, and it will be getting the water now increased from what the area that was gravel and now is pavement, that two percent grade. Have there been calculations done about how much water? You know, you know, how can we be sure that that swale will handle the increased runoff? Because I haven't gone there a lot. I know that that area on the left, the area on the left where the water comes down the hill and into the parking lot, that gets really wet there. It moves all the gravel out that they put in. So that's just a concern.
Yeah, the increase flow is small relatively due to the paving area. Everything else outside the project remains the same. We are formalizing it and making it larger. If I go to the profile, you'll see that. You'll see that we're only really talking about. Maybe a hundred or two feet of roadway where, not even, where water is actually pitching towards that area, everything. At the bridge and to the right from a horizontal standpoint goes to the east of the bridge. Uh, but we can also, we can, we can verify that and, and let the commission know as well. Of the capacity of that swell. I don't have that information with me tonight.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Sotomayor. Uh, Mr. Elder, do you know what methods are, are gonna be utilized to install the cofferdam?
Uh, so generally per the specification, uh, the DOT standard specification. Uh, the contractor is allowed to select methods approved by DEP or Condat. They include. Uh, sheet piling, uh, either drilled piles if it's a bony or substrate with lagging. Concrete blocks wrapped in plastic sandbags. But I believe due to the high water table and high water surface elevation and depth of excavation that's gonna be needed. Uh, that will preclude or limit the cofferdam types to either sheet piles. And or drilled piles with, uh, lagging in between. Um, I don't, I don't foresee them being able to do this with, uh. With sandbags or, or dead men. They certainly, they certainly can't pump this. Or bypass something that large. But if the commission felt that, you know, some of these methods could be too or maybe too intrusive, like. Another project recently where, uh, the commission, because of the water table and the high flows. They excluded a few methods. Like damming and pumping or damming and bypassing, they excluded a few methods that. Contractors could generally pick from so that, you know, we, we sort of kept the limits and the impacts. To something where we're comfortable with.
This is Commissioner Sotomayor. Thank you for that, Mr. Elder. Um, the options may be limited here. But I know sheet and pile driving can cause a tremendous amount of acoustic pollution. I don't know if there's been any thought given to the impacts that something like that might have to the wildlife there in the vicinity. I'm not sure if you can speak to that.
Uh, yes, so in our coordination with NDB and fisheries. Uh, they gave us times of, uh, work throughout the year. Uh, it should be in your packet when we can install and remove cofferdams. For example, will not be able to, or the contractor will not be able to install cofferdams between March fifteenth and June first. Due to, uh, the herring that's migrating and some of the spring recreational fishery. Fish, fishing that's going on, so those limitations are included and those were considered. Uh, as part of the design and will be included in the special provisions for the contractor, uh, to follow during construction.
This is Commissioner Sotomayor. Thank you for that. That's right, I, I, uh, did read that before in, uh, the packet. Can you refresh me what the timeline is when this project, uh, if it's approved, when. Uh, you guys are looking to start the construction. I know one of the first stages is to install the cofferdam and, um, those. Timeframes that you guys are not able to do that, um, may kind of coincide with the beginnings of the project.
At the beginning of the project, yes, so as of now, construction is slated to begin, uh, next spring. The next steps are to finalize design once we get through the permitting process, submit to the army corps and go out for bid. Hopefully, uh, in the winter, uh, advertise the project. Once bids are in, there is a possibility that we, uh, could start. Prior to that, March fifteen. No-go zone for cofferdams. Or alternatively, the contractor will have to wait until June first to install his temporary cofferdams. Uh, there are certain things that they can do prior to installing temporary cofferdam. Mobilization takes a couple of weeks. Any clearing may take a couple of weeks. They could remove the deck. They have to order materials, um. Potentially do a test pile, uh, which would be done from the roadway base behind. Uh, the existing structure. So there are some activities that they can perform, but, uh. He won't be allowed to install anything in the wet during the restricted period.
This is Commissioner Sotomayor. Thank you. I appreciate the explanation.
This is Commissioner Goklowski again. In a perfect world, sir, what do you think the timeframe is? That you wanted to start working on this project and completing it?
Uh, in a perfect world, we'll start April first, get the contractor awarded, get mobilized. Submit a shop drawings, design for review, things of that nature, and it'll be completed at the end of November. Of that same season. Uh, we have a schedule of two hundred and forty calendar days, roughly eight months. It's not a particularly difficult project. With the exception for the handling water, which, which, which can take some time. That's gonna be the biggest, biggest challenge that they'll face. Uh, if you got a good contractor who's familiar with this sort of work, uh, they can certainly, they can certainly get it done. Um, within that timeframe, uh, there is the potential that. They run a little bit later. And we're seeing that on a few projects also, depending on the contractor. And what they end up doing is make sure the road is safe and passable, maybe put the first course of pavement down, the binder down. So that, you know, we can have the road open to the public to be able to use it by the end of, uh. By the end of the construction season and worst case, they roll into the spring of the following year and do the final pavement course. When the temperatures are more conducive to, to installation of pavement, so. Perfect will, everything will be done this year. In perfect world. Some ancillary items will, will leak over into the spring of the following year.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Bagamana. Couple of questions, just about this structure of, that is the bridge, the ten foot wide. It's open on the bottom, right? It's three sided, so it's. Open on the bottom so that the bottom of this structure underwater is natural. Pond bed or whatever.
Correct, that is correct.
And. And the depth that it is now is going to be replicated in the depth in the future in terms of what goes under there. I'm just thinking of the fish and the. Whatever else passes underneath that bridge.
Uh, so the existing stream bed material or the existing stream bed elevation is not gonna change. Uh, that's something else that, that the regulators, uh, requested, as limited disturbance as possible to that natural stream bed. Uh, your existing foundations are unknown, but they're assumed to be shallow. And you may not think it, but our numbers are showing that this structure has a high scour susceptibility. Because it narrows and any narrowing of a large water body increases velocities. So in our proposed condition, uh, we'll have piles that go down to bedrock, a single row of piles. With a concrete footing on top of it so that the structure is protected for future storm events. Down the road, but as far as if I were living under this bridge, everything will look essentially the same, just a little bit more room.
And Commissioner Bagamana again. Thank you. So the room is the width, not the depth of the water.
Correct, correct. Slight, slight improvement to the depth because we are raising the profile a couple of inches. Smoothing it out, you know, trying to maximize hydraulic capacity, but. The real room is that additional six feet three on either side of the existing.
And this is Commissioner Bagamana. The second question is different. It just has to do if. It has to do with erosion and sediment controls, um, and if you could talk about them. But if there's an other commissioners that wanna talk about the bridge or whatever now in sequence that. I can wait on the erosion and sediment control question.
I'll go ahead, I guess.
Okay, so can you just point out, I know you have the description of this erosion and sediment controls. Can you just point them out on the site plan? Where they are and what they're for, like for stockpiling for et cetera.
Yep, so we have pumping and settling basins for handling water on either side of the project. That's for when. He installs these heavy dark lines of temporary cofferdams and he's doing work within this area. It'll get wet, you know, he's gotta pour concrete and do things of that nature, so we have these pumping and settling basins to pump the water. Get the sediment out as much as possible before then returning it back to, uh, the natural water course. So that's as far as handling water goes. The limits of the cofferdams are these heavy dark lines.
Mr. Elder, can you pause for a minute? Uh, I wanna make sure I understood. So you're saying that within this cofferdam. The, the water and the sediment that you're removing will then be replaced? With the same sediment and water or that sediment that comes out with the water is then. Taken somewhere else for disposal and. Different waters put back in or, or, or it's just allowed to fill back in?
No, so the sediment, so while the contractor is working within the cofferdams, digging and so forth. You'll have sediment and any water that comes in between there. That dirty sediment water is pumped into the pumping and settling basin. Where the sediment is taken out of the water before it's then returned. To, to the water course. That's shown by these two pumping settling basins on either side of the project.
Can you, this is Commissioner Boda again. Can you just zoom in?
So this is the first proposed pumping and settling basin to the east of the project. And another one over on the west side of the project. And the other features of handling water erosion and sedimentation control. Include the cofferdams that I discussed earlier, which are the dashed dark heavier lines. And then beyond those are, uh. Silk fence or sedimentation control, erosion and sedimentation control fence. That extends from the limits of our cofferdam to the limits of disturbance on all four corners. I'll pan out to a bigger view, uh, so that you can get a better grasp of that. So on the mitigation plan. I'll start on the south westerly corner. We have a sedimentation control fence at the limits of construction. It runs around all tired disturbance, including the mitigation area. Back around ties back into a temporary cofferdam, which also runs along this area back over here. And then silk fence runs along the edge of the channel all the way to the limits of construction on this end. So that's the, uh, westerly side of the project. To the east, we have a temporary cofferdam that's enclosed through this area. In the dashed dark line and beyond that, in the dry, we have a silk fence, sediment, erosion, sedimentation control fence. Showed by the SF symbol that runs along the edge of the road. To the limits of our timber guide rail and anchorage here. Also along this side, along the north that runs to the end of our, uh, sidewalk and. Guide rail installation there. So those are erosion and sedimentation control, uh. Uh, items that were included in the contract. And details were shown in addition to that as per the ENS standard guidelines.
This is Commissioner Bagamana. So there aren't any stockpiles because you're taking water and sediment out. And you're putting it in those, um, pumping and settlement basins. When, when all that brick has to be brought in. For, for the foundation of the road and the, on the bridge. Where will that be deposited on the site plan?
Uh, so most of that is concrete that's poured. It'll come on a mixing truck. Um, so that's not really brick, uh. The only, the only material that could possibly come on site and be stored maybe. The subbase for the roadway gravel. That would be stored within the limits of his road closure. If he has to do a gravel pile or if there's. Steel that gets delivered, he'll have the limits of the roadway, which is about three hundred and twenty feet. Of roadway reconstruction that we're doing that will be closed, uh, for him to be able to, to. House equipment and material. As far as brick and that sort of stuff, that. I, I don't think we have, uh, much of that, yeah, sorry.
This is Commissioner Bagamana. I was fooled by the little, the little dashes.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
Little designer bricks, so. I'm just thinking about the stockpiling of, so gravel and when they. When they take that gravel area of the parking spaces on the left, on the, on the west and turn it into. Bituminous, whatever. Um, is this, is the rest of the road gonna get torn up? Is this whole road going to be repaved or is it just the gravel area?
Oh, it's, yes, so it's being repaved through the limits of construction. Uh, if you can see my cursor, I'll zoom in a little bit closer. So on the easily end, the end of construction or the end of repaving is at station three plus sixty. We do extend the sidewalk a bit further and guide rail. At the beginning of construction or start of construction, we're at station zero plus forty. So for approximately three hundred and twenty feet. Uh, we're reconstructing the entire roadway structure to be paved. Including that sidewalk portion as well over here.
So Commissioner Bagamana again. The removed pavement is going to be put where? What, before it gets taken offsite?
Uh, the contractor, dump trucks usually take those offsite. As they dig it up, it goes into a dump truck and. It's, it's taken away. Some contractors take it to plants for millings. Grind it up and reuse it on different sites, uh, but it's contractor owns it, uh, once he pulls it up.
Mr. Elder, I just wanna tag on to Commissioner Bagamana's question. Is that written in the plan, on the site plan? That that material will be removed?
No, it is, it is not written on the site plan.
Okay. We're just gonna put a little note, a, a pin in that to, to come back to that.
Yeah.
We like the details on some of these site plans because, um, we have a history of engineers constructing beautiful plans.
Yep, some of the best plans are laid and the contractor gets out there and, yep, we've been doing this for. Twenty something years and as a matter of fact, I serve and. I'm a commissioner in my town in Windsor on the Wetlands Commission and I see the same things and go through the same, uh. Uh, issues that you guys are dealing with on, on, on these projects and most projects. Even from other engineering firms, so I, I do understand the concern, but, uh, the stockpile question is a good question. We could. Add a designated area to the plan or as you, as you mentioned, we can definitely note that. Stockpile or any material left on site either is tarped or protected. Prior to rain events or removed, uh, as soon as feasibly possible. You know, certainly, certainly something we can, we can add to, to improve. To improve the plans.
Commissioner Bagamana, go ahead, uh, excuse me for jumping in on your question.
Uh, it's Commissioner Bagamana. That's what I was just gonna ask whether it was in the. You know, the description of the project and the timeline and the site plan, so. I, I think for the pavement being removed, best option would be that it's removed the day it's taken up. best option would be that it's removed the day it's taken up, that it's not stockpiled?
Okay.
And if, I mean, if you said that that's typical, and it, I don't know if you have any, and if that's not possible, then definitely the, because it's a pile of, of millings this close to the water is just gonna leach right into the water. So I think, I think I would want that just removed that same, same day.
Yes, we can, we can certainly note that. Yeah, it is typical though, because the contractor does want the room to work, drive equipment around. So unless it's material being delivered, like it's steel for his reinforcement, you know, or formwork or things of that nature, they generally, most of them generally like to have access, bring equipment in, move back and forth, move excavators around. And if you have a pile sitting there, it, it impacts them. But to, to be, to be safe and secure, I, I would certainly add a note to the plans that requires that any excavated material is not stored on site and removed due to the sensitivity of the area and proximity to the pots.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Boda, are there other commissioners that have any additional questions? Okay, then, this is Commissioner Boda, I have just a couple. Earlier, following one of Commissioner Bega-Mon's questions, you had indicated that the subsurface was going to be gravel? Is that correct?
Uh, yes, so you'll, so it's a process base, let me see if I have that view here. Uh, so this is over the bridge, so it doesn't really show it, but essentially we have the riding course of asphalt, three inches, three or four inches. Below that, you have six inches of binder pavement. And then below that, we have process aggregate base or gravel. That's usually about 10 inches for this project, based on the easels, the amount of vehicles, pavement loads and things of that nature. So how it's installed is the road is boxed out and they install that eight to 10 inches of process aggregate base or gravel. They roll and compact that, we test that for moisture and compaction, make sure we have a good base. Then they install the binder course of asphalt on top of that. And finally, they install the riding course, the top course of asphalt over that. So that would be your pavement structure throughout most of the project. Once you get, once you get over the bridge proper, or the bridge itself for that 16 feet, you'll not be able to do the full gravel base, so that's gonna just entail the asphalt structure.
Okay, and this is Commissioner Boda, is that binder include asphalt millings?
Uh, no, process aggregate base is specked. The OT item with aggregate sizes conducive to given good compaction. There are no millings being proposed.
Okay. And, and I think just out of an abundance of caution, I, I think that would be something to, you know, it's, on, on these plans, we indicate what is happening, but I, I think also just being aware that the, the target is to not have asphalt millings kind of exposed to precipitation. And so what you've just described sounds ideal. I just, the goal would be to not have it replaced with something else like millings.
Okay, we certainly add that note.
This is also Commissioner Boda, in the project narrative, it talks about a proposed freeboard of 1.5 feet. And I'm wondering what the freeboard is now and that 1.53 feet? If that is a regulated number, if that's a best practice, how, how you landed on that freeboard?
Uh, so the freeboard is what we were able to attain with the structure type selected. Do you know what practice is that? Or law, the, the law requires that we don't increase the water surface elevation by more than a tenth, either upstream or downstream, because that has insurance implications on properties adjacent to the structure and addition to any structure. So one of the things that we go into design with is based on the watershed or based on the drainage area, structures are rated either small, medium or large. And based on that rating, they would say, okay, for this structure, you need to design for the 100-year storm. So we then run our hydraulics for 100-year design flood based on the structure type. And we document and report to DEEP what the freeboard is, any under clearance. All this information gets reported to TEP and the Army Call. And we do something that's called an override certificate, certification that sort of says that, you know, we improved the hydraulics and showed no rise or no increase to the water surface elevation. So this, the 1.53 is just documenting what the proposed freeboard is, which is better than the existing. I don't have the existing number in front of me, but it's an improvement. And it's part of the hydraulic table and hydraulic report that, that, that DEEP has reviewed. So that's sort of, that in a nutshell, I hope that answered your question.
It does, thank you.
Okay.
Are there, Jamie, was there anything that you also, I would know that we started with the project engineer? Is there anyone else from the applicant that was gonna offer testimony this evening?
Uh, no, I am solo tonight.
That's okay. Jamie, is there additional information that you also wanted to bring from the town or anything?
Uh, Jamie Frederick in the Wetland agent, so I will just comment that the town engineer is, does appear to be on the call. I don't, I, I don't think he was gonna present anything, however, if there's any questions from a logistical standpoint, I would defer to him. So I do know we have a lot of fairly new commissioners, so I did kind of want to get a little bit into the mitigation requirements. So anytime that there's direct impact to wetlands, particularly exceeding 750 square feet, the commission looks for some mitigation to help offset the impacts. So another thing the commission often looks for is prudent and feasible alternatives, particularly when there's a public hearing held on the finding that there may be a significant impact to wetlands or, or watercourses, which was one of the reasons for opening this public hearing. So we did receive a narrative that outlined the prudent and feasible alternative analysis thought process and presented why the applicant believes that this is the prudent and feasible alternative. Usually the commission does look for site plans outlining prudent and feasible alternatives that have less impact. I think this is a unique situation in the sense that the proposal is to replace an existing bridge based on today's design standards. So I think, I think the written narrative is likely sufficient, but I would leave that to the commission to identify if you have any particular concerns regarding that approach. So generally speaking, the requirement is two to one mitigation. So if you're impacting 1,000 square feet, you need to mitigate 2,000 square feet. There is the ability for the commission to reduce the mitigation requirement from two to one to one to one. Actually, rather than pulling it up from my book, I suppose I could screen share it so we can see it.
This is Commissioner Boda, you're gonna, I was gonna ask, you're gonna bring up the regulations?
Yeah.
You're gonna bring up the prudent and feasible analysis?
I'll bring up the regulation first, and then if you want to take a look at the prudent and feasible alternative analysis portion of the application, we can do that.
Before, yeah, okay. Why don't we, since we, you started with the prudent and feasible analysis, why don't we start by bringing up the, the part of the regs for that?
Sure. Alright, so we have it kind of sprinkled in a couple of spots. So we've got Section 7.7 of the regulations, specifically, I believe it's I... Three. Alternatives investigated which would cause less or no environmental impact to wetlands or watercourses and why the alternatives were rejected in favor of the regulated activities proposed in the application. The applicant shall be prepared to discuss the alternatives at the meeting. Such alternatives shall be diagrammed on a separate sheet, plan or drawing, including a written narrative and be submitted with the application. And basically, the other spot is pretty repetitive of this one. So they did provide a written narrative of alternatives considered. I don't think any of them had less impact, but there is the consideration of the fact that this is a replacement project and not a new proposed bridge. And I think that that kind of, to some extent, has to be considered in regards to the restrictions of what can be considered with the project.
Sure, well, and this is Commissioner Boda, I, I think the other thing is the requirements that were present when that original bill, the original bridge was built versus the requirements for a bridge now have also changed and the applicant is working within those requirements, not
Agreed, yeah.
60-year-old or 70-year-old requirements.
They mentioned the road width requirements, the sidewalk requirement, and clearly they're not designing in excess of what, what they need to design to. Would you like for me to pull up the alternative analysis for you as well on the screen? Or do you want to review the two to one mitigation requirements section?
Why don't we, why don't we stick with the prudent and feasible analysis? And just close the loop on that a little bit?
Sure, give me one minute. Okay. So this is a table that kind of outlines the alternatives that were presented early in the meeting. Outlining the type of proposed construction or approach, the pros and cons and kind of what the thought process was and whether, why that was just posed of as a alternative. I don't know if you want me to go into the overviewing them again, I'm hoping that everyone looks at them, they're sounding familiar.
Well, I think that Mr. Elder had, yes, had reviewed these earlier. So I don't think you necessarily need to re-review them, but maybe give folks 20 seconds to look back at that table. And it's also in the the Open Gov.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the project narrative in the Open Gov.
Page.
Record, correct.
So again, I, I think just to reiterate, this is Commissioner Boda, what Jamie just said, in order for an approval to occur, the, the commission must acknowledge or recognize that there, there is not a prudent and feasible alternative, that this is the best case scenario for this application. And at some future time, were this permit to, were this application to be permitted, that would be something that would need to be put on the record. Do any of the commissioners have questions about those four alternatives? Well, one of them is the plan. Okay. Hearing none, Jamie, how about we go on to mitigation? And let's start with reviewing the, the regulations regarding mitigation.
Alright, so 7.9 and 7.10. So 7.9 essentially is the condition that identifies if you're impacting wetlands or watercourses over 750 square feet, you must provide some sort of mitigation. Compensation measures should be considered in the following order of priority. Restore pre-existing wetlands or watercourses, enhance degraded wetlands or watercourse to improve functions and values they provide. And three, create productive wetlands and watercourses. And then Section 7.10 generally goes into, okay, you're creating this mitigation or compensation. Tell us how you're gonna maintain it and ensure that it's successful. So the town of Branford in the Wetland Regulations also establishes a no net loss policy, essentially looking for the fact that there's no reduction in the wetland slash watercourse areas in association with a project. So a couple of things to kind of point out. So we have got the state wetland slash watercourse impact plan. It identifies in green the temporary areas of impact. Permanent areas altered, so that's where the existing wing wells are and will be removed for the most part, and then there's a little bit of grading at the ends on the eastern side of the project. Permanent loss, a little bit at where the new wing walls are being proposed. And then we have a summary table here, which outlines permanent impacts at just under about 468 square feet and temporary impacts at just under 2,000 square feet for a total of 2,400 square feet of impact. And then if we jump to the mitigation plan, got the permanent gain outlined where the width of the culvert is increasing. And then also kind of adjacent to those new wing walls where there's currently a bit of a gap, a shelfy well adjacent to the, the bridge. It will become more of an open water condition and become wetland slash watercourse. And then we have the mitigation area which is a little unique in the sense that it's not proposed to be necessarily wetland per se, so much as kind of an enhancement of wetland adjacent area. It seems more likely that this northern end of this area might develop wetland properties than the air, the swale area adjacent to the parking cells. But I did want to point out, they also have a table on this page. Permanent wetland watercourses gain, they had as 5,000, or sorry, 532 square feet, which is slightly more than the permanent wetlands lost. And then for the mitigation number, they have 2,920 square feet, where they have the total impact of Where they have the total impact of, or. Of two wetlands of two thousand four hundred square feet, so when you. Add the mitigation area and the permanent wetland slash water course area gained, they get to that. One point four four to one mitigation ratio. Um, which could be within, I just realized I never actually read that section of the regulations. Um. So right here. Since it is not possible to replace a mature and functioning wetland or water course with a created habitat, wetland or water course creation will be. At a ratio of at least two to one in area, mission may reduce on a case by case basis, but it cannot be reduced below ratio of one to one in area. So I do think this is a little bit unique, um, like I've already said, because it's replacement, replacement of an existing bridge. Um. And I think the, you know, the, the considerations in meeting today's standards. Um, and the restrictions of the immediate working area. Um. Can be a bit challenging, um.
Can you, this is Commissioner Boda, can you go back to the, the map for a minute with the mitigation? Mr. Elder, I'm, I'm wondering, um, moving, I guess, uh, to the. To the, to the right, um, you have that thin kind of mitigation area in dark orange. I'm wondering why it's, uh, where it's the wetland seed mix. Wondering why it stops where it does and it doesn't continue moving to the right. It would be on the south side of the bridge.
On the south side of the bridge. Uh.
To the right of the.
I'm not in control right now, I think, I think Jamie's in control.
Control, yep.
To the right of.
So you have, this is Commissioner Boda, you have that, the, the, the bridge itself and those wing walls. Um, and you move your cursor, Jamie, to the right, you have that long stretch, this long stretch of orange, that's permanent mitigation, yes?
Yes.
So what, where that cursor, it, it ends, it looks like it ends rather abruptly and.
Yep.
Um, I'm wondering why, why there, why not further, why not try to get a couple hundred extra feet?
Uh, so the wall, it ends where the wall ends and the cofferdam ends, uh. But because of auto grading works out, we can naturally grade beyond that area. Um, we can show the area within the silt fence as, as wetland seed mix as well, up against the edge of the road. Uh, between the SF line and the edge of road and extend, uh, that area a little bit more, but because. Because we're installing the wall. And essentially having the natural topography match the channel, so to speak. That area in orange will be allowed to stay wet and, 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 and reestablish. Once you get past the orange, we're sloping back up a little steeper to the edge of the road. So it's tough to say whether or not it would operate like a wetland, right now it, it does not. So I didn't want to. Show that as potential area for, for wetland, when it's probably just going to be the edge of the road, the shelf, so the snowshelter, so to speak.
Thank you.
Yep.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, uh, not that it makes a big difference in square footage, but I was kind of curious about this area. Um, and why that's called out. Uh, because it appears that the wetland line, um. Is further closer to where the sidewalk is proposed, so this would probably just become an open water condition? Or I mean, it would be an open water condition and.
Yes, it, that's.
Both before and after the.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an open water condition. Based on the water, the dark blue dash line. Uh, the dark blue dash line goes in front of the orange, back to that little sliver. Now with the wall constructed, that water line is going to go up against the wall, that's why that little sliver is, is coming.
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, um, just for context for, for commissioners and, you know, any members of the public. I do think on repair applications, so replacement repair projects is. Historically, when the commission has allowed deviation from that two to one requirement. Um, kind of considering the benefits of improving. The overall condition and, um, the challenges of doing that when it's. You know, already in a tight condition. Um, so I say that only to say that I don't think it would necessarily be inappropriate to reduce the mitigation requirement from. The two to one, um, so long as it remains above the one to one minimum requirement.
This is Commissioner Begamon, there's a lot of wetlands in the same wa- same water course. Um, is there any consideration of doing some mitigation in. Other areas along the shoreline of either the ponds or something like that?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, that did come up during discussion, um, I think that there were. Some concerns about the project limits and, um. And scope of work, I would defer to the applicant to respond with any additional information.
Yeah, the, the project limit and scope of work did easily be modified, but I think the biggest challenge with that is. Sort of the general topography of this area, most of you've been here and driven along this road. There's literally not much room between the pond and the road, particularly to the south. Then if you went around further to the east, uh, most of the low line areas are already wooded. And, uh, have sort of swales established. If you're, if you're further to the east of the project, going around that curve all the way in. So we did a walkthrough and. With the intent of trying to document areas that could potentially be, you know, uh. Mitigated or show some enhancement, and there was little or no room to do that because it's. It's, it's basically all wetlands right now, so, uh, we would just be disturbing areas that. Are wetlands to then replant wetland, uh, to try to get to the two to one. Um, it, 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 it was challenging to even find areas to do that. Uh, in the vicinity of the project, if we, if we wanted to go somewhere else in town, uh, to, to, to get that. Two to one, I'm, I'm all ears to that.
This is Commissioner Boda, there's plenty of places, I'm sure, that could be from TLC.
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, I will just point out that this project currently consists for, relates to specifically. Uh, the Chestnut Street right of way and a parcel, uh, known as two hundred Chestnut Street. Uh. Not sure, yeah, we don't have parcels on this map, but.
This is Commissioner Begamon.
Oh, we do.
Oh, sorry.
Within the right of way and this parcel here, so I'm not, not to say that mitigation couldn't be considered somewhere else. In the supply ponds. Parcels, um, but they're not currently subject to the app, pending application.
Commissioner Begamon, were you gonna say something?
Uh, Commissioner Begamon, so is mitigation, would invasive treatment? In the area be considered mitigation?
Enhancement, it's a form.
Enhancement, um.
It's a form of enh-
And would, would that count? I mean, we know in this area, there, there's a lot of invasive.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, so that, that did come up during conver- preliminary, you know, review conversations, um. And I think the question becomes, does it have to be invasive species management of wetland slash water course areas, or would. General invasive management be acceptable, because it, you know, relating it back to wetland. Mitigation, so it, after that storm we had, um, the microburst, I want to say in twenty twenty or twenty twenty one. Um, it opened up the park quite a bit, and since then, there's. A ton of burning bush, but it's not in the wetlands, so I don't know that that would be considered. Mitigation and also the extent of it, I mean, where do you draw the line, and if you're drawing a line? How successful will the project be? Um, so. I think the main food for thought there would be the, does it need to be wetland slash water course area that's being managed? The ponds are already being managed by the open space midi, um. For some invasive, um. Through deep aquatic pesticide application, permit application, um. And there's also some treatment over by the. Dam to help ensure, you know, that that's structured, remain sound, um.
As.
Was that the end of your?
Could I, could I make a comment real quick?
Yes, please, thank you.
Alright, yeah, so yeah, I just, I just want to chime in, uh. I think Keegan's done a great job of, of the presentation here and kind of explaining more of those technical. Uh, aspects of the project that, that I couldn't speak to, um. You know, obviously, we're, we're, we're kind of trying our best with, with what we've got in this area, I think, you know, the, you know, going. Splitting the difference, not, not intentionally, but splitting the difference between, you know, two to one and one to one mitigation. You know, we, we're not aiming for the, the low end here, right, for, for one to one mitigation, so we, we are trying to be responsible and, and getting as much as we can. In this area, but it, as Keegan said, it is pretty difficult as far as the, the terrain, um, accessibility. You know, how much more damage are you getting to a spot to try to do some mitigation as opposed to, um, you know, getting to those areas that, that. You know, WMC is designed for mitigation, um, we did, as Jamie said, we did talk a lot about, you know, invasive, um, treatment. Trying to figure out where, where we could do something around this pond, um, or these two ponds is. Again, I, I know you're all familiar with this area and Keegan spoke to it as well, you know, we've got a lot of steep slopes, we've got. Um, you know, woody vegetation and there's just not a lot of areas that, that we can find. Um, that would actually make a difference as opposed to, uh, the areas that are proposed, so. Um, you know, we really did try to, we tried to get to the two to one, but looking at the, the areas that we, that we actually have. Uh, that we could do some mitigation, didn't make sense, um. You know, try to do something, I know that, that field, we don't want to touch that field, there's a history behind that field, that, that came in, in discussion to see if we can. Somehow, you know, make a little bit of a difference within that area, um, but that opens up a whole other can of worms too, so. Um, I, I think that the, the plan that's been presented, you know, again, it kind of, it. It takes into consideration all those different challenges as, as far as this project goes, so.
This is Commissioner Begamon, the trees, the question just about the trees being taken down, the shrubs, small trees. Um, along the roadway, the causeway where the bridge is, they're not being replaced. Um. My understanding doesn't, right, is that, is that correct, there, there's not going to be plantings?
That is, that is correct, that, that area is going to be sort of where we reestablish more water course. Uh, based on what's shown in the southwest, a little bit on the southeast. Uh, but yeah, there does, there's, there's no plantings going back in that area.
This is Commissioner Begamon, I've seen people catch good fish right off that road, I don't know what's going to happen without the shade, um. Just a comment, and I guess DEP and the fisheries people are, are okay with that, but often when we have a project that takes down shrubbery and trees, we. We see where those trees and shrubs are going to be planted, and I suppose that's the mitigation, part of the mitigation plan. Um. Just trying to think of someplace else that could be improved, um.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, I hear you, I had the same, same comment earlier, um. And it is challenging because the shelf is. Sloped down to the ponds and being removed through the new proposed construction method. Um, so really kind of your options for replanting become the, the ends of that, and there's really not enough space. On this eastern side of the road, and on the western side, it's already pretty densely vegetated. Um, again, on the, the northeast side, it's. What can remain is going to remain and, and, and it really won't be space to plant additional. Um, the one thought I had is in this area, maybe you could get, you know, a tree that's tolerant to wet. Because that is in the wetland, I know that there are a couple of. Dead slash dying trees in that area, so I don't know if maybe a tree could get introduced there. I'm not sure what kind of impact the canopy over here would have on the removed canopy over here. That's kind of where my thought process landed.
Commissioner Boda, I, I, I tend to agree, especially, I, I was also thinking about that far, far corner, um. With the kind of removal of the canopy, um. And I, I'm, I'm wondering, I saw the report from, I'm not a hundred percent on the pronunciation, is it Jennifer Beno, Beno?
Uh, I believe it's. Beno.
So, and she's the ecologist?
Ecologist and botanist, I believe.
Yeah, so I, I, I think that, um, you know, the, the commission doesn't. We don't create applications, right, but we do offer, um, comments for consideration and. Um, so that would be something that we might ask her to take another look at, you know, with. Changing that, that light, um, that does have. Physical impact, has a chemical impact, um, and so how, um. She might be able to account for that, and if we could get a tree in if we're taking some canopy down. Okay, so we, so we've talked about. Prudent and feasible alternative analysis, um, we've, we're just talking about. Mitigation and the commissions need to land on either. The one point four instead of two is, is okay, um, or we can also potentially, um, send the applicant back and say. Listen, um, talk to your ecologist, see, see what else might be done, and if. You know, then, then you come back with that information, because as the engineers, you know, that's. We would just look for the ecologists to, to have the, give us our, the, the technical guidance on that. Um, I, I did remember one question, one additional question I had, uh, for Mr. Elder, which was, can you? Can you talk a little bit about the removal of the cofferdam and, um, the. I, I think probably my biggest concern would be, um, a significant amount of. Um, sediment particles being suspended as something like that is removed. And so can you talk a little bit about that and, um, how we might ensure that water quality isn't, um. Negatively impacted in that process.
Uh, yes, I can, I can. Speak to that, so uh, one thing that we've seen um. Curious contractors use like a turbidity control curtain curtain that that helps mitigate uh. Some of that, we can, we can add that to the plans for installation and removal of the cofferdam, but um. That's the only method that I've seen done to sort of alleviate some of the suspended solids that are. Uh. Generated when you install and remove temporary cofferdams.
Great. Okay, and so. Got a couple of. Jamie, were there other big topics? I I wanted to um. Do a couple of things, which is. Open it to the public, there's some folks here. Maybe somebody wants to make a comment or has a question, um, and then the the other thing would be to just. Take a minute and and look at criteria for decisions um. Beyond or in addition to the mitigation um. And prudent feasible. Analysis and um, remind commissioners that um. While the the hearing is open. We have the opportunity to ask questions to get information. Um, once the public hearing is closed, we can no longer ask. Um, for additional information, we cannot receive additional information, all decisions. Must be made with the record that we have in place and so. Did want to take a moment, one, to open the the hearing to public comment if there's no other. Immediate questions from commissioners um. Or uh, from you or or Mr. Elder. And then two, to then. Look at criteria for decisions so that. Everybody feels okay with the information that we have, or if we need to. Add to the list for Mr. Elder um. After this meeting. So um, that being said, is there anyone from the public who would like to comment or has questions um? About this application?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland. Agent, um, I did get a question in the chat, it says, when calculating the area of wetland, are you including the buffer? Um, so. When calculating the area of wetland impact in regards to the two to one mitigation requirement, we are calculating the impact. Direct impact to wetlands slash water courses. Um, not. The upland area adjacent. Certainly impacts to the upland area adjacent to the wetland or water course is something that the commission books out and considers. But as far as calculating the mitigation, that's. Calculated based off of direct impact to wetlands and water courses. Um, and just to. Um, remind every or inform everyone, uh, if you would like to talk. You can raise your hand, use in the in the Zoom meeting, or if you're having a hard time finding that. If you want to unmute and and say your name. Um, well. We can take public comment.
Okay, so um. It doesn't seem like we have any at the moment, um, and so. Jamie, if you would pull up criteria for decision. And so we're looking at ten point two.
Everyone's seeing section ten point two to share the right screen.
Um, and and just again, to reiterate, this is a moment to, as we're looking at criteria for decision. Um, to. To decide if you have. Additional questions or you need additional information from uh, from the applicant.
This is Commissioner Bagman, I I do have another question. When. For Mr. Elder. And it might be for the the. The ecology soil people, but when you're making those cofferdams and you're sucking out the water and sediment. And then putting it in those other. Oh, I forgot to call them, those those things where it settles out and you. Take away this silt tunnel, um, the storage. The.
Pumping and settling.
Pumping and settlement basins, yeah, so. In your experience, when you're sucking out at the water, what kind of organisms are um? You know, fish or whatever come in and are any of those? Organisms somehow. Saved or do they just? Like what happens? What happens to any sort of organisms, whether? Uh, depending on the time of year, there could be buring turtles, there could be et cetera, et cetera, so it's. In terms of the water course and the animals that live in the the water, what happens to them?
So the installation of corporate apps with the time of year restrictions that we have. Uh, which is included in our notes and uh, recommendations by fisheries. Uh, is mainly geared to sort of mitigate or alleviate that concern. Burying turtles who are nesting or fishes that are migrating or spawning um. During that timeframe. So. What the state has seen over time is by reducing or eliminating cofferdam insulation during those periods. We stand the best chance of limited disturbance to wildlife as far as. When they do get to installing the temporary cofferdams and the bypass, the work and the noise generated by. Uh, that operation. Keeps most of the wildlife uh, away from the site to begin with. And the area that's confined, uh, once they confine the work with the cofferdam, there are no organisms that come inside. Uh, uh, that call for them that would potentially get pumped into the pumping and settling basin. Uh, they're pretty much gone at that point, uh, the other thing that that even fisheries look at. Is like you mentioned turtles, there are some sites where they require a pathologist to do a site sweep. Prior to the start of construction, if there was a concern uh, for species or anything like that during during our work activity, so. That that was vetted out with 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 the regulators and and as far as. Impacts of the species, it it would be limited based on our schedule and the means and methods of the work.
Thank you.
Jamie, uh, this is Commissioner Boda, do you want to bring up those criteria for consideration?
Should be out.
Thank you. Okay, um, so I think just. Big, big picture, um, we're looking at um. One that. Feasible improvement analysis. Looking for less or no environmental impact, we talked about that a minute ago. Um, I I I think that the other consideration um. Is this relationship between the short and long term impact. Um, and so we had that the different coloring. Within the site plan. Um, but. I would also just. Remind that that also Commissioner Bagman has asked a lot of. Um, thoughtful questions about sediment and erosion control, and so if there's. Other um, questions or wonderings that. Now is a good time, um, a reversible and irretrievable loss of wetlands and water courses. Um. The character or degree to which. This interferes with safety, health, or reasonable use. Um. And impacts of proposed regulated activity on wetland or water course. Outside the area for which the activity is proposed and future activities. Um, because this is a public hearing, we're at ten point three. Um, the we remember we cannot. Issue a permit um, unless we find that this is. The um. That those other prudent and feasible. Alternatives would not cause, well, that this would not cause more impact. Than those other versions. Um. Talks about denial. Gone to uh, ten point four and ten point five. And then it it goes on to just the stuff that we talked about earlier, that everything. All of the decision, all of the consideration needs to be based on. The um, submitted material. And the um, conversation that is on the record during the public hearing. So um. Personal experience outside, nobody should be having an outside conversation about it, except for potentially with with staff. Um. But given that. Are there other questions um? For. Mr. Elder or about the application?
This is Commissioner Papantonis, I do have a question for Mr. Elder, um. You had discussed. Doing nothing is an alternative, but then commented that the roads in such or the bridges in such bad shape eventually. Um, it. I guess would have to be abandoned, is that what you said?
Uh, yeah, so it's in, it's rated a three out of ten now, which is. Uh, one level below poor, which is a serious condition, so the. Qualifications for state funding are poor or worse, after you get past level three, you go down to a two. And at that point, it becomes a sa- safety, uh, well, it is a safety risk to the traveling public. Hence, the reason that I mentioned that it could potentially be. Either closed or abandoned if you were not to replace it.
And and if that were to happen, what would be the environmental impact?
Uh, the environmental impact would be minimal, uh. It will slowly deteriorate and potentially fall in. And. Go back to. Uh, just water. Going through the opening, no vehicles or pedestrians being able to cross. But the environmental impacts would be. Minimal.
Okay.
Commissioner Bagman, again, I'm getting used to these, the new format of materials. Being presented on our doc gov and stuff, is there a sequence of construction somewhere? I was trying to find it.
Uh, no, there isn't a general sequence. Mainly because we're. We're closing the road and the contractors means and methods would would uh, would dictate that, but I can walk you through uh. Uh, general sequence of. Activities for these bridges that we've done, uh, if you would like.
Um, it's Commissioner Bagman, I would, I would rather have a sequence written so that um, the contractors, I mean, I know that. From what you just said, there's generally a sequence that would be followed, but. Let's let's be sure it goes in the right. Series of steps, the right sequence, so I typically, we have something written about a sequence of. Activity, don't we?
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can certainly add that, that's.
So this is. Yeah, this is Commissioner Boda, I think to that, I, so if we, I'm. Been trying to kind of keep a list of the. Homework for for Mr. Elder, um. We can call it that, and so um, I've got the construction, sequence of construction.
But there's, sorry, uh, there's a sequence of construction on the Hamlet Water Plant.
Thought that there was something somewhere.
What sheet was that?
Sheet eleven.
Okay, we'll cross that one out, um, and we Commissioner Bagman can take a look and see if there's any any gaps. Um, the um, earlier uh. In the discussion with Commissioner Sotomayor, you talked about. There being a couple of. Cofferdam uh, type and construction. Um. And so perhaps you can go and and help narrow that down. You, um, we talked about adding turbidity. Control curtains for the installation and removal of the cofferdam. Am I going at an okay speed?
Yep.
Okay, um, clarifying what that seed mix is for the swale planting. I have a note about um. Oh, the removal of existing pavement, um, and just some additional detail to be added about. The timing of that um, material being removed off of site.
Okay.
And then lastly, um. Going back to um, Ms. Benno. Um, about. If if there is some way to. Um, do some additional enhancements, thinking, recognizing that um. The 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 shade and the lighting regime is going to change with the removal of those canopy from. The roadway and how we might um. Enhance. Potentially that uh. So the eastern side, Jamie had it up on the map. A little earlier, it was on the the far side of where you are, or if if she can with her her training and her wisdom. Um, can offer. Other um, enhancements.
Okay.
Is there, is there anything that I have? Missed from this discussion this evening? Um, yeah, I see a hand, um, Ms. Sandberg.
Um, this is Olivia Sandberg, Commissioner. But I think you mentioned something about um, an infiltration system. Um.
Oh, I, yeah, so I had asked, thank you, I had asked if it the swale was going to be used for infiltration. Um, Mr. Elder had indicated that with the high water table, it seemed unlikely, but. Uh, if you would be so kind as to to take a look, I, you know, if where we can infiltrate, it's always. Ideal to infiltrate if we can a little bit. Um, but that would mean. Confirming um, the infiltration. Rates or possibility, or if maybe you'd had to add in some. S- stone or sand beneath.
This is Commissioner Bagman, I looked at the construction sequence. It doesn't have anything in the sequence about the mitigation and the planting, that timing of it, so maybe that's on a separate sheet.
You're, uh, Mr. Elder, you're muted.
Uh, no, it does not have, that's in the standard specification, the eight eighteen, it. Specifies planting periods, I believe in the spec, it talks about October fifteenth uh, for planting. But this is because it's a state job. All the planting requirements are per diversion segmentation guidelines and DOT planting. Uh, DOT and DAP plant and. Recommendations. Which are in the eight eighteen and part of the specs for the project, I could send that over as well too.
This is Commissioner Boda, is there anything else? Um, obviously, this. Application is going to stay open um, for this evening. Um. But is there anything else as? I'm I'm sure if there's anything else that Mr. I'm, I'm sure if there's anything else that Mr. Elder needs to address, it would be better to have it now.
Commissioner Goklowski, I mean, we, we know how old the current uh bridge is. It's quite old. Mr. Elder, you didn't say the life expect expectancy of the new bridge. What is that going to be?
Uh, so the new bridge life expectancy is between seventy-five and a hundred years. Uh.
Far past our lifetimes.
Yes, yes, yes. The old bridge was constructed in nineteen forty, so uh it's, it's eighty-four, eighty-five years old, something like that. Um, and it's, it's getting to its end. Yeah.
It's been getting to its end for quite some time.
Yes, yes, it has.
Um, this is Commissioner Boda. Um, so why don't we look at dates? Uh. So I'm assuming we're not having a meeting on Thanksgiving. It's a safe assumption, yeah?
Correct. The next regularly scheduled meeting is December eleventh.
December eleventh. Uh, Mr. Elder, is that a reasonable amount of time um for you to be able to address these open issues?
Oh, that should be, that should be no problem.
Excellent. You've been on the hot seat for almost two hours. You're doing great.
Uh, this is still a cool seat. No, we're, we're just, we're, we're, we're excited to, to get something that's permitted and approved for the town that you can have a infrastructure that you don't have to worry about. And that's environmentally economical, so to speak. So whatever you guys need, we're here to facilitate.
Great.
Th- this is Commissioner Goklowski. Um, for the record, um, on the eleventh, um, I have promised my time from six to seven at the Blackstone Library to perform for some Christmas event that they're having there. So I will be back in, in front of my computer somewhere about seven fifteen to seven thirty. So I just want let everybody know that I will be there, but I'm not going to be on time.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Gokowski. Um, so unless there's anything else um that Mr. Elder needs to know, I'd be looking for a motion to continue this public hearing to December eleventh, please.
This is Commissioner Begamon. I'll make a motion, oh, I don't have the name of it, uh, that we continue the hearing for the two hundred Chestnut Street Bridge repair. Um, twenty, BRI twenty-five, ten oh one, I believe, to twelve eleven twenty-five.
There a second?
Commissioner Goklowski, I'll second that.
Okay, we'll take a roll call. Um, commis- uh, any questions on the motion?
I, uh, this is Commissioner Papantonis. I have one question because Commissioner Goklowski said he will be late. Um, and I'm a little concerned to make sure that we have enough commissioners present that we'd be able to vote at the next, unless we start the hearing a little bit later than seven o'clock.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, um, we can look at the agenda when we schedule it and see if maybe there's something quick we can put beforehand. Um. So that way he's present for the full public hearing.
And as, and so long as the chair is, this is Commissioner Beck, uh, Boda, the um Commissioner Basserman, Chairman Basserman is back. He can watch the video and he's, he's usually here.
Yeah, any commissioner not present can watch the recording and state such on the record and participate.
Okay, so uh Commissioner Begamon.
Commissioner Begamon, aye.
Commissioner Gokowski.
Commissioner Goklowski, aye.
Commissioner Papantonis.
Commissioner Papantonis, aye.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Commissioner Sotomayor, aye.
And Commissioner Boda, aye. Motion carries. So, Mr. Elder, enjoy your Thanksgiving. We'll, we'll see you in December.
Sounds good. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. Okay, so um, let's see, Jamie indicated that um Silver Street has been tabled. So moving on, um IW twenty-five dash two, Three Pepperwood is withdrawn. We have no applications for receipt. Uh, and that brings us to other business, um Seventy-one Midwood Road Correspondence. Uh, Jamie, do you want to start us off?
Uh, sure, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent. So um as Acting Chair Boda pointed out, uh, this is correspondence. At this time, it's not a violation or an application. Um. Generally speaking, uh, I've identified three main concerns that are raised in the correspondence. Um, a drainage pipe, a shed, and a compost pile. I have reviewed the materials. Um, I have been out to the sites and seen the item, the, the infrastructure. Um. Based on my review, it appears the pipe was installed around nineteen eighty. Um, I, I made that determination based on field assessor, sorry, the assessor field card. Um, and uh testimony from property owner of twenty-four Stone Street. Um. Current shed uh is within the one hundred foot upland review area. It appears that it was installed around twenty fifteen. It is shown on a twenty fifteen survey that was reviewed. Um. As part of a building permit for raising the house. Um. I did not find a permit for the shed. Um. And then the compost pile, based on testimony that I have been in receipt of, um, it sounds that the composting has been ongoing since um around nineteen eighty-five when um property owner or around, since around eight nineteen eighty-five. So long story short, for enforcement action, burden of proof is on the agency. Um, at this time, I have not taken any enforcement action. Um, it is correspondence for the commission, so I'd like to open it up for commission if you have any questions, concern, feedback.
This is Commissioner Boda. So is the primary issue that we're looking at, the um the development, the, the installation of a shed within a hundred feet of a wetland without a permit? Is that the primary?
That's part of it and part, the pipe isn't real, so there is a pipe that discharges directly to the wetland area. Um, so the concern there is whether that discharge is impacting the wetlands. Um. From my research, it appears that there was previously an open drainage ditch that conveyed water to where the piped where the pipe currently discharges. Um.
But this is Commissioner Boda, but this pipe has been there since nineteen eighty?
That's my best guess based on when the garage was constructed that I go I'm, I'm making assumptions here because I don't have a lot of information. I couldn't find anything about when the pipe was installed or its extent. Um, but based on where the open ditch was relative to the garage um and where the garage is situated now, uh, my best guess is that it was installed around nineteen eighty.
Um. So. Okay, so this is Commissioner Boda. I um, I don't think that I, I can recall an instance in which the commissioner had, uh, the commission rather has taken action on any, it's, it's hard to say with a straight face, right? Anything like it's forty years old. Uh. Yeah, I, I, I can't, I mean, I ma- maybe the shed, but even that, that's ten years old at this point. And you said, um, it's within a hundred feet, it seems?
It's within the upland review area for sure. It's, it's probably within it, I would say it's within fifty feet without having measured it recently. It's probably closer than fifty feet. Um. A minute.
Okay. Um, so this is interesting. It, it's, it's definitely not a typical um thing that the commission would see. Um, I see that we have a hand from Ms. Esposito, and I see that um Town Attorney Anaskovich is here. She's always a treat. Um, and so I'm just curious if um before I ask uh Ms. Esposito if Mr. Anaskovich would like to has anything to add about this unique situation with a forty-year-old pipe.
Thank you, Chairman Boda. It's always a treat to see you as well. Um. I am here mainly to answer questions uh that the commission might have as it relates to legal issues related to uh what Ja- Jamie has presented. Um, I will tell you uh that in my experience, I uh concur with you. I have not found any evidence of the commission taking action on something as old as, as this. Um, and so it, I, I uh concur that this is a unique situation. Um, I would also add one piece of information, which I, I think the commissioners are aware of uh because the memorandum of decision was put into uh your materials. Uh, there is currently uh an order of the Superior Court granting uh by adverse possession ownership of all three of those um uh encroachments, if you will, the drainpipe, uh, the shed, and the compost corral. Um, in addition to an underground fence and a stone wall, uh, the court has, uh, the spirit court has granted ownership to the defendant in that case um in a, in an action brought by uh the plaintiff, Ms. Esposito, who's here with us tonight. Um, and uh I understand that that um action is on appeal. Um, and so to the extent uh that the commission determines that enforcement action is warranted in this case, uh, we would um have to take a look fairly carefully at who, in fact, we are issuing the notice of violation to. Um, uh, given the situation that we have um legally at this moment. Um, uh, because as you know, from other situations that we've had in town, um, the regulations allow for notices of violation and cease and correct orders to be issued against anyone who constructs or maintains um a, 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 a um, a violation. So I offer that up by way of information at this point. Happy to answer any questions. Uh, but short of that, I, I don't find any pertinent legal issues at, at, at play here at this, at this moment that, that um, uh suggest I, I, I hold forth in any, in any way.
Thank you so much. Um.
This is Commissioner Begamon. Can I just?
Yeah, please.
Ask. Um, I just we're inland wetlands and watercourses. There's a shed that might be in the Hunter Upland Review that maybe didn't get a permit. Other than that, i- is, is there a current impact to the wetlands, a detrimental impact to the wetlands that's happening, Jamie, that you, you noticed when you're out there? Because I'm wondering what our purpose is here.
So Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, um, I just measured based off of that two thousand fifteen as built survey, the shed appears to be, be about forty feet away from the wetland. And the compost area is between the shed and the wetland. Um. I mean, through the process of composting, there could be some nutrient impacts to the wetland. Um. Whether or not composting isn't as a right activity, I would defer to the commission to make that determination. Um, and then the concern has been raised that the pipe is detrimentally impacting the wetland area. I don't have clear evidence one way or the other. Um, the wetland delineation that I have on file is, I believe, it's on a survey from twenty fifteen. I, I don't have the wetland report. Um, I just have the delineation on the survey. I'm looking through the notes right now. Um. See if I can find when the wetland delineation was done. Um, I'm not immediately seeing that information, but.
Jamie, this is Commissioner Boda. What, what is the pipe draining from? Like, what is it? What?
Based on that, so I'll bring share the survey real quick. Based on the survey, it appears to be connected to a catch basin within Stone Street. Um, so here's Stone Street to catch basins. And the pipe appears to originate from that catch basin and discharge to the wetland area. And uh you can see the garage structure that overlies it, which is why I am inferring um that the pipe was probably installed around nineteen eighty. That's when the permit for the garage was um noted on the assessor's field card.
So I, and this is Commissioner Boda. In, in nineteen, so the, the well and rags are not much older than nineteen eighty?
I believe it's nineteen seventy-four is when the commission was formed and they don't know if the regs were written in seventy-four, I think they were probably seventy-five.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm wondering if that was I mean, it wouldn't have necessarily been an inappropriate thing to do if they're trying to convey stormwater and return it to a wet area. I, I'm, I'm totally inferring. But I mean, it, it moving water to water. Just a thought.
This is Commissioner Begamon. So sounds like we're looking at whether this is something for us to consider at all, given how old all of these constructed things are. And then the second thing to me is, does, does the commission sometimes take these issues that are brought up? Um. Like a pipe that's discharging directly to the wetlands, that probably wouldn't be correct uh, construction now. I mean, what do we do with that? You know, does and, and there are two neighbors involved. Does the commission say two neighbors talk to each other and figure something out? I mean, I'm wondering what our role is here.
Um, Ms. Esposito, I, I, I do see your hand. I, I think before we, we talk to the property owners, it's really important that the commission wrap its brain around what our jurisdiction is because um before we can um then hear additional information, we just have to get our feet under us for a minute.
But the pipe that we're talking about is the town's pipe. So the property owners, it's not between two property owners. This pipe is discharging from the town onto my property. No easements, no permits, nothing. So it's not a dispute between two property owners. It's really just, it's coming onto my property. And I'm sorry I brushed it in, but it was getting a little, you guys were going in the direction that I wasn't intended, so. It's an eighteen-inch culvert that's flooding the property. And I've put in the record, I have video of it just pouring in, and it has uh done a number on the lambs, and it continues to. So, okay, now you know what I needed to say.
Right. So this is Commissioner Papantonis, and I have a question for Attorney Anaskovich. Um. If, if this is the town's pipe, um, it, at the very least, would the town have some of it is frozen, so I don't know if any of yous hearing me or not. Um. But at the very least, would the town have at least a prescriptive easement that that's my question?
Okay. Um, to my now, I mean, Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but there's no record of the town having installed that pipe. There's no, no, no denying the pipe is, it, the drainpipe is connected to the line in the road that, that belongs to the town. But, but there's no uh That that belongs to the town. But but there's no uh I have not seen. Uh, information that would corroborate that the town installed that pipe. Am I am I wrong, Jamie?
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, I'm I'm not aware of anything that indicates the town installed the pipe. Um, I'm not. Aware of anything that indicates who installed the pipe. Um.
So, but let me go back to my question then. Then whoever installed the pipe and whoever owns the pipe or or. You created this situation. With forty years, forty-five years of history, isn't. There's some kind of a prescriptive easement or something that's been created here?
I don't uh, the Commissioner Papantonos, I I I don't believe. Uh, well, first of all, we haven't looked at the question of whether or not. The town could acquire the passage of time and easement on the pu- on a pipe it didn't install. Typically, those easements are for purposes of maintaining something that the town installed. Um, but in this particular case, uh, the the threshold issue is. Um, uh, who installed who installed that pipe and when? Uh, and that, of course, then raises the issue of um. Uh, timing and and its relationship to the passage of the regulations. The town engineer informed me in a meeting about this some time ago that the drainpipe is made of a substance. Uh, and uh is such that the town would never today approve that type of pipe. For that kind of dr- that kind of draining drainage. So. It there's there's a lot to suggest that this is not the town's pipe. I we would have to look at the. The 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 question of whether or not. If a private landowner constructs a drainpipe, connects it to a town line. Um, and and time passes, the the town acquires some ownership interest by by e- easement. I. You know, we'd have to look, we'd have to look at that. If you want us to look at that, we could look at that, but I'm not. It's 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 not striking me uh o- o- off the top of my head as something I've ever seen before.
So so then we just just take it out? If we if it's out of the town, can we just take it out? Sorry, Esposito. Sorry.
Thank you.
Jamie, this Commissioner Papantonos, is there? Um, if hypothetically speaking. This pipe would be re- would be removed, what kind of impact would it have? On on the uh wetlands in the Upland Review area?
Uh. Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent. So I mean, it would be activity within a hundred feet of the wetland. So theoretically, it should get reviewed. Permitted. Um, I think, is everyone seeing uh?
Yeah.
Map?
Yeah.
One, two, four, five from the land records. So this is what. The. Property looked like approximately um prior to the house at twenty-four Stone Street being developed. Um, but it shows. It shows a drainage ditch. So I mean, I that's a hard question to address because I don't know what the proposed. Mechanism would be of how far back you remove it. Do you then keep the open drainage ditch to where the pipe outlet currently is? Do you? You want to create more wetland? Like, I I mean. I think that kind of gets into the we don't design projects. Um. And there's, you know, kind of a lot of different options. Um. It seems to me the water is always gone in that direction.
So this this is Commissioner Boda. I I think just from my perspective. This is so old. And without better historical context, documented context, um. I it it seems like if if someone wants to disconnect or to remove the pipe, then they would. Need to put in an application to do that um or petition the town to do that. I. I just don't, I I don't. I'm not aware of what mechanism we have to go back to nineteen eighty. Like, if we went back to every um. Every action that was taken without a permit, I think that we would be completely overrun. Um. Not to encourage people to do things without applications, but. Um, I think going back to nineteen eighty and nineteen eighty-five seems. Um, like not a not not a good strategy for us. Um, I'm wondering what other commissioners are thinking. Um.
This is this is Commissioner Gokowski. Number one, I think the time. Time passed is is a very important issue, but the other important issue, you said that this is currently in the. Court system, this particular matter?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, so it's really. Um, from my short time on the commission, when something is tied up in court, we kind of don't act on it because. We really can't act on it because the court will supersede our ruling. Isn't that in fact true?
Well, in this particular uh commissioner, I'm sorry, Chairman Boda, if if you want. Uh, in uh Commissioner Gokowski, in this case, um.
Mr. Anisovitch. Say your name.
Yes, uh Bill Anisovitch. Um, in this particular case, the issue before the court is ownership of the. Of the uh uh of the drainpipe and it among other things, right? Um, if the if assuming the town wanted the drainpipe removed. It would have to establish whose consent it needed to 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 remove the pipe. Um, and and right now, um, y- y- you've got a a superior court order that says the drainpipe by adverse possession belongs. To the defendant, uh, a decision that the plaintiff has appealed. So until there's a final judgment rendered. In that case, and we have a definitive statement oh uh wi- with respect to who owns the drainpipe. Uh, i- i- it's it's difficult to know how the town would proceed and against whom. Um, without, you know, jeopardizing uh uh a- a- anything going forward. So um. Prudence would dictate that at a minimum, um, that we 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 wait for a final judgment as to who who owns what. Uh, and 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 meanwhile, try to collect as much information as we can about impact on the wetland and. Uh, and all the other information that you would need, as Chairman Boda has pointed out, to document. Um, provided that that the commission w- was interested in 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 addressing something uh of this age.
So this this is Commissioner Gokowski. It's also hard to try to address something when we don't know whose whose ownership. And what the court is going to rule. And so until that till that actually comes. To fruition, I I I don't know how we can act on anything or point any figures. And and I know Ms. Esposito was very upset over this whole matter. Um, she's very passionate about her property. We've. We know that already from her visiting us in the past and I respect her for that. So, um. And I know she's in a debacle, but until we can show ownership or prove ownership. I don't know how we can act because we wouldn't even know how to who to violate at this stage of the game.
Thank you, Com- Commissioner Gokowski. Are there other commissioners that um agree or feel differently? That would like to. Say anything?
This is Commissioner Papantonos. I agree with Commissioner Gokowski that um. We we don't have anything we can act on at this point.
This is Commissioner Bergman. I would. Agree that we need to wait, find out about ownership. And if it does come back to us, I think that there would have to be in term. In terms of the information that we would want is an expert's evaluation of. Whether the discharge from that pipe is damaging the wetlands in any sort of way.
This is Commissioner Stottermayor. I agree with Commissioner Bergman. Um. It's hard to tell what type of impact that drainage pipe has on the wetlands. Um, I do agree with the other commissioners as well. And Mr. Anisovitch, um, sort of delaying the decision-making process until. A final determination has been made on ownership of um. Those encroachments. Uh, but I I would personally like to do a site visit here. I'm not sure if that's something, um, Jamie, that. Uh, is possible at this location before the final determination is made.
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent. Generally, the commission only does site visits for application. Um.
Is it possible that this will turn into uh some type of enforcement action?
Well, I mean, that's kind of why it's on the agenda before the commission. Um.
Before you guys, I'm sorry, it's Lorraine Esposito at Seventy-one Midwood. Before you make your decision, I'd really would. Please let me help uh inform you because you're going down a path that is isn't. What I'm actually protesting or my complaint is about, so. I would like to be able to help you understand the situation and what I'm actually asking for you to do. And it's gotten sideways.
Um, this is Commissioner Boda. I I think. Ms. Esposito, I could, we can give you a a couple of minutes to to get your thoughts out, but I I would also just. Um, have you keep in mind that as I, if you were here at the beginning of the meeting. The commission has a very narrow purview and um. While we have regulatory authority, it is um a very narrow window that we work within. Um. And so while as property owners and as fellow community members, we may empathize. Um, the the law may not give us the the latitude to to do what you're asking. So I would just ask you to keep your comments. Um, brief and tied to. Um. Direct impact to wetland.
Absolutely. Uh, Slorina Esposito, Seventy-one Midwood. The the. The chief concern that I have is that there is a storm drain, an eighteen inch metal pipe that is discharging. Storm drain water onto my property, goes through twenty-four stone and onto my property. It is a town-owned pipe, according to the engineer, uh, because I did reach out and ask about that. There were two pipes protruding. Under the ground, they're sub, under the ground, and when, once the vegetation cleared, they were visible. I got clarity from the town, town engineer, Mr. Ortiz at the time, who who said that. The PVC pipe was not the town's, and that's the one that you are, it appears is. You are talking about when you're talking about the legal matter between the Ravens and I. The PVC pipe is. Still up in up up in the air on who owns that. But Mr. Ortiz. Determined or declared that pipe, the one next to it, the eighteen inch pipe that you see in the uh site survey. Is the town's property and he has told me I am not allowed to interfere with it. So while we can't find who put it in, uh, I'm I'm in a pickle because. I can't take it out either. It it absolutely inundates the property with stormwater. On rain events, but it is also tied into storm into some pumps and gutters. Along the pathway up in the whole Stone Street. Um, and so even in dry times, there's water there all the time. There are no. There's no mitigating anything. Sediment is in there, runoff, soil erosion, you name it, I got it. And I am asking the commission, regardless of when that pipe was put in. The conditions that are being uh that I am, th- the condition it creates is adversely impacting the wetlands. So that's really the big concern I have. The issues about uh violations, potential violations from my. From my abutting neighbor were not necessarily confined to the to the shed and the compost. I understand those things are. We're we're slugging it out in the courts. Got it. But there are many other issues that I raise that do not get addressed. And I felt there was a disproportionate response to a one-sentence complaint. That he levied against me that resulted in an immediate notice of violation and a whole bunch of. Hoops that everyone drew up, had to jump through. When I I raise that as a disparity. I still don't get any assistance in understanding the process. And maybe I'm not fully aware what the process is. But I don't get a response. And so it feels like there might be a disparity. But for this meeting, it's really all about the town pipe and having that uh on. Uh, it it has no easements, it has no permits, it is just dumping copious amounts of water onto my land. And it is impacting it. Now, that's what I present to you. And now you, hopefully, it's cleared up the situation. And whether or not you come out and look at it, I think that's actually warranted.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Raven, um, again, if you could keep your comments brief and narrow. Make sure that you um. State your name for the record and your address, please.
This is Daniel Raven. We're the uh abutting property to Seventy-one Midwood at twenty-four Stone Street. So. The shed that, I I have a few comments. I will keep them definitely brief. The shed that you mentioned was, in fact, installed in twenty fifteen. Uh, the predecessor to that uh with the same footprint was installed in nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, for current purposes for of the wetlands. We store absolutely no chemicals, no paints, no, nothing that could possibly interfere or. Contaminate the uh the wetlands. We have an electric mower and the batteries are in the garage. So there there's really nothing in there. That could impact the the wetlands. Um. The pipe is is a little bit complicated. It was installed by the previous owner who built the house. He was a drainage expert. That's what that's what he did professionally, David Massey. And um what he explained to us was that he put in a series of some s- stone um. Uh, drainage aids around the house so that it would be particularly well-drained. I don't know whether that pipe going into the wetlands is uh is. You know, part of the underground drainage system, but I strongly su- suspect that it is because it it. The pipe points directly to the middle of the house. Um. There's a question raised about what would be the impact of removing the the storm drainpipe and um. During the large storm, Sandy Irene, Stone Street was completely flooded. And I would offer to the uh commission that if that drainpipe were in fact removed. Which I think is a terrible idea for many reasons, that the threshold for flooding the street would be lowered and. Even mild um uh rain events would be flooding the street. So. Um, that's my comment on that. Um. The other thing is that the pi- as someone mentioned, the pipes have been in the ground since we moved into the house forty years ago. We've done absolutely nothing to change them or to impact them or to add or subtract absolutely nothing. Uh, the only thing that I'm aware of that was done was the town came out and dredged out or or had a backhoe. And cleaned out the drainage ditch. So that kind of, you know, makes me believe that it's it is part of the town property. And that they do have an easement to to access that that pipe. Um. As far as uh Ms. Esposito's complaint that we are ruining the wetland, I I see absolutely. No basis in fact for that. For the past forty years, the wetland has been thriving. We've put absolutely no chemicals. We we don't use fertilizer or weed killer, absolutely nothing on our yard. We're very conscious about the environment. Um, so if if there has been a change in in the. The drainage ditch and in the sediment, whatever, I would look to Ms. Esposito's activities. Such as removing all the leaves. I would look to Ms. Esposito's activities, such as removing all the leaves from the forest. Uh, there's a dam so that the that the drainage ditch is filled up with water now and during heavy rains. So it's um, I think, I I think we're looking in the wrong place if there's a problem.
Um, thank you, Mr. Raven. Um.
Thank you for hearing me.
Yes. So um, I mean, I I think the commission has indicated it's a tentative, deep tentativeness, um, given the the timeline. Um, I think Jamie, if someone within um the and and Olivia, somebody within the the town offices can see a little bit more about the 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 history of this pipe, who the the ownership, if the town has been maintaining it. Um. I I would anticipate some of the additional water would just be because our our climate is changing. Um, and so these rainfalls are getting more intense. Um, I don't know that any one person um would be impacting them that way, but um perhaps that is the starting place for for us. Um. And unless.
This is Slurry Esposito at seventy-one Midwood. I'm going to save you all. This is obviously, the the issue is it needs to be further defined so that the commissioners can understand what it is I'm actually asking for you to do. So what I'll do is I will prepare a a complaint or a raise my concerns very narrowly as it relates to the town pipe, nothing with uh my rare neighbor because I unless he's going to say that he put it in, which he just said he didn't. So it will just be a very narrow purview and I will, and then you'll look at it and then you'll put me on the agenda in the future because it's eh you 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 can't, I I gave you all of the freedom of information uh efforts that I have gone through to find the origin and the track of the water and all of that. It's all in the in the Dropbox. So if you're not able to to do something tonight, and I absolutely get that it it feels a little dicey, not a problem, I will come back to you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Esposito. Um, Jamie, are we? We've got a a direction?
I believe so. Um.
Okay, great. Um, so um, let's move on to um other business, the annual meeting schedule for twenty twenty-six. Um, and again, we're hitting nine thirty. Um, so if we can be really expeditious. Good night, Mr. Anisovitch. Thanks for joining us.
Bye, folks.
All right, uh. Bear with me a minute. Um, so everyone should have gotten a copy of the proposed meeting schedule for next year. Um, I don't know why I can't disable my. So generally speaking, since COVID and meeting remotely, every year I like to raise the question of does the commission want to meet remotely or do you want to meet in person? And then also, we have started meeting twice a month rather than just once a month. So I also like to raise the question of do we still want to have two meetings a month or do we want to go back to only having one meeting a month? Um, historically, the commission has met on the second Thursday of every month, and the commission increased that to the second and fourth Thursday with the exception of November and December, where there's still only one meeting a month. Um, so uh, before you, you should see the draft schedule for next year. If anyone sees a conflict with the holiday, please let us know. We can reschedule or remove that that meeting date. Um. So again, yeah.
So then the the heart of the issue, um, and can we get a quick pulse from the commission? Um. So first, Zoom, not Zoom.
Zoom.
It's one for Zoom.
So I'll throw out real quick benefits of meeting in person. I think the meetings generally move a little bit faster. Everyone's encouraged to be able to go home. Um, some people find it easier from the public. Benefits of Zoom, anyone can do it from anywhere. If you're traveling, commissioners can still participate. Some people find it easier to to participate via Zoom because it's easier to see the site plan.
Yeah.
Um. That's my quick two minutes, two-second summary.
Uh, Commissioner Gokowski has said Zoom. Other strong opinions?
Zoom. Begaman.
Yeah.
This is Commissioner Sotomayor. I'm open to either or. Um, if we were to meet in person, would it be uh somewhere um in Branford?
Yeah, has to be in Branford, be like uh that maybe the community center. Something like that, or the fire station, firehouse.
Probably would have to be at the firehouse because they have the cameras set up.
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent. Currently with the renovations at the police station, it probably would be the community house, but we usually try and have a meeting room penciled in somewhere in case there's a large public hearing or something, and the commission decides to hold a particular meeting in person. So even if you say you want to meet remotely, we do try and hold out something for in-personish.
Commissioner Papantonas, do you have a, this is Commissioner Boda, do you have a preference?
Don't hate me. My preference is, Commissioner Papantonas, my preference is in person.
Oh, hey, Jim.
This is Commissioner Sotomayor. If we met in person, would we have access, uh, internet access, um, technology capabilities where we would meet?
Uh, you you would have internet access. Um, you would as far as I'm aware and based on past practice, if you wanted a device, you would have to bring your own device.
Yeah. Um, this is Commissioner Boda. I I am also a strong proponent of Zoom. It's lovely to see y'all in in person. Um. But the times at these meetings and it's really, really helpful to be home. Um, I get up exceptionally early. Um, and I do like the ability to see the screen, see everything right here. Um, those little maps that the applicants hold up, nobody can see them. So it's a little dicey. Um, Jamie, would it make sense to just put out like a quick little survey monkey or something like that to actually get a a a real poll?
Um, my only concern might be that we would be putting ourselves out for the first meeting. We have to have let me just double check dates real quick. Um, we would we need an answer before the December eleventh meeting, or else we wouldn't be able to have a regularly scheduled meeting January eighth.
Um. Well, so if you put out a quick little survey, you know, that you've seen those, like the doodle poll?
Well, I guess if we're happy with the dates and we're just finalizing the location, I suppose that that could really be done through a doodle poll, yeah.
Yeah. That way, everybody's got to say so, even if they're not here. Um.
Because we are kind of.
Does that sound, does that sound like a plan, folks? I'm going to take sounds as a yes. Um, and then the second question was about the second doing two two, two Thursdays or one Thursday? Feelings, thoughts?
The one meeting a month was becoming pretty taxing on time. Our meetings were extremely much longer. They're still long, but at least we get what we get accomplished, we get accomplished, and it's not carried over to the next meeting.
Folks agree? Have other ideas? This is Commissioner Boda. I I I tend to agree. I don't don't love two meetings a month, but I I do love that uh not being in meetings until eleven o'clock at night. Um. So I I would say stick to the two, maybe add like no July ninth meeting or something, you know what I mean? Just get rid of one of those July meetings because it's summer. But that's just me. You could do a two-for-one special with the doodle poll.
Um.
Oh, but you need the date.
I would like to have the dates confirmed. Um.
Does anybody?
And there's also the possibility, if you want, we can make a note for June twenty-fifth to you know, make a decision whether or not to cancel that July twenty-ninth meeting, or we can just cross it off now if the commission wants to do that.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Just put a note for in in May or whatever.
And the benefit of doing that is if we receive an application, it kind of keeps the process moving for that individual.
Uh, does anybody strongly object to two meetings a month?
No.
Thank you for that decisiveness. Okay, it looks like two meetings a month. Um, and Jamie, I'll send out a doodle poll about the location. Um, that brings us to BRI twenty-five dash one Jefferson.
Real quick, I don't know a hundred percent, but can we just get a motion to approve um with the location to be confirmed via doodle poll and reported back next on December eleventh?
Okay, can somebody make a motion?
It's Commissioner Begman. Can somebody, I, there's just a little error, typo, whatever, in the meeting dates. I mean, it says no second meeting in December, which is true because it would be the twenty-fourth. It's the day before Christmas.
We can make that modification.
Um. Commissioner Begman, I'll make a motion that we approve the twenty-twenty-six in the Wetland Commission meeting dates as presented in the meeting on November thirteenth.
This is Commissioner Gokowski. I'll second that motion.
Okay, um. We're gonna take a quick vote. Commissioner Begaman?
Mr. Begman, aye.
Commissioner Gokowski?
Commissioner Gokowski, aye.
Commissioner Papantonas?
Commissioner Papantonas, aye.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Commissioner Sotomayor, aye.
And Commissioner Boda, aye. All right, speeding along, Jamie, BRI twenty-five dash one Jefferson Road.
Um, proposal was to install a rail fence along the sidewalk above a culvert for for safety reasons. Uh, only ground disturbances. The poles for the the fence, I approved it administratively.
Awesome. Thank you for doing that. Um, and then the correspondence and announcements, uh, Kehy Wick is on Saturday.
I sent an email out to everyone who registered earlier today. Um. Just as a reminder, and if you have any questions, feel free to contact the office tomorrow.
Great. Um, and then just um I will toss out a reminder that that public hearing, please um, do not pick up information from somewhere else. If you have any questions, talk to Jamie. Um, and is there a motion to adjourn?
Before I make a motion to adjourn, thank you for chairing, Ms. Boda. And I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion. Good night, all.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.